First thing we're gonna do is, we will call. Evans?
Here.
Sheeler?
Here.
Orkin Hagan?
Here.
Coe?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Matten?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Mayor Wollene?
Here.
Okay, would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for coming, for those that are here and those in the TV audience. Thanks for tuning in. Before we get started, I just wanted to make one quick comment. I don't know if you knew or not, but the administrator's mom had passed away last week, and so I wanted to publicly give my condolences.
And we all share that.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any other question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Chair? Yes.
Have a correction to the consent calendar.
Yes.
On Connie Hillman advanced to step salary D, which is a consent calendar item, the correct dollar figure is listed on the letter, but on the agenda it's actually incorrect. The correct dollar figure per resolution 0414 is $7,211.46. So again, it's correct in the letter, but it's just on the agenda, it's got misstated.
Okay, so with that being said, is there a motion and a second to amend that?
Move.
Second.
Okay.
It's needed.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now, let's move forward to the agenda.
Move to approve the corrected agenda. I'm sorry, it's corrected. Adopt the corrected consent calendar. It's a move to resolve to order. Adopt a resolution to adopt the consent.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a real call. That's what I was stumbling.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkin Hagan?
Yep.
Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Parks? Okay, as we have been doing lately, just mentioning the applicants that we're calling to fill different committees. We have one term in the Cable TV Advisory Committee and one in the Transportation Advisory Committee, so if you have any desire to be on either of those committees, then just contact staff. Number six, approval of bills and transfer of funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personal Finance moves to approve the bills and transfer of funds as presented.
Roll call? Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkin Hagan?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Okay, item number seven, A, Safety and Public Works, would you report?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have eight items on the agenda. Item number one will be 122 First Avenue Northeast. This was the practice fire that happened in northeast Bay, northeast Brainerd, and the motion is to step the low bid from DeChantelle excavating for 1515 and assess the property for seven years with interim, and that would be the motion. I can probably quickly see, there was two bids, and there was another bid from Hango for around 2,500, and we're taking a low bid here.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Item number two, soapbox derby request. The motion is to recommend request closures and activities, and there's a couple of things in there. The Parks Department is again requesting to close 15th Avenue Northeast on three Saturdays throughout the summer to conduct the races, and Katie Kaufman from the Brainerd Parks is working it, but the motion would be to approve.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Item number three, 2014 micro-surfacing project being, this is something new, I'll probably have Jeff to just quickly explain what micro-surfacing is.
Ken, Mr. President and Council, this year we're trying something a little bit different. It's been used for a number of years now in the state of Minnesota, but it's called micro-surfacing, and it's, we have a couple of streets that are very good candidates for this sort of pavement preservation treatment. Oak Street between Sixth and Nineteenth is one of the candidate projects this year, and we're trying to take care of a rutting problem that we're having on the pavements. The pavement's only about 10 years old, but if you drive Oak Street, you'll notice that in the wheel tracks, we're starting to get some slight depressions in the pavement, and we're starting to get sort of a bad crack pattern within those depressions also. Water tends to sit in those depressions and facilitates a quicker deterioration of the pavement, so with the micro-surfacing, it's something that will apply in two coats or two lifts. First, the ruts will be filled, and that's just with, it's almost with a paver-type machine, but the ruts will be filled so that they're back up to grade, and that's only about anywhere from a quarter to maybe a little over a half inch to three quarters of an inch of material. And then a final course is put over the top of the drive lanes, and that's usually about, probably about three-eighths of an inch thick, so it's a very thin pavement. It's a combination of fin aggregate and oils that are laid like almost with a paver, so we end up with what appears to be a newly paved roadway. It's a process very similar to what happened on West Washington Street two summers ago, when they ran into a similar problem with rutting. So that's essentially what micro-surfacing is. This year, we're proposing to do that on Oak Street between Sixth and Nineteenth Streets and on South Fourth Street from where we connected with the College Drive Project up around the corner to Super America, and there we don't have the rutting problem, but we've got the longitudinal joints or the construction seams that are starting to fail and pull apart, and the micro-surfacing is a very good process to prevent that from occurring also. So those are the two candidates that we would like to move forward with this year.
Thanks, Jeff. Well done. We're talking about nighttime operations on this, and that'll be the motion to approve this. It's around $132,000 project, and the motion will be to approve the project and authorize advertisement for bids, but then also to host a public informational meeting would be part of that motion, because we're planning on doing this work at night, and that would be the motion.
I just have a question. Jeff, when were these streets scheduled to be resurfaced or repaired?
They're not in the schedule. Oak Street, that pavement's only about 10 years old. We have had one chip seal on it a number of years ago, but now with the rutting problem, it's something that we need to correct, to correct the drainage, and we're confident the micro-surfacing will do that quite well. Probably, I'm thinking another 15, 20 years, we may take a look at a mill and overlay on Oak Street, something of that nature. Likewise, on South Fourth Street, that pavement's a little bit older, that's about 15, I think 15 or 16 years old. Again, with the micro-surfacing, that should solve the immediate problem that we have with the surface, and we don't anticipate anything major happening on that road either for the next probably 15, 20 years.
So just for clarification, then, with the $132,000, are we going to be shifting when some of the other streets that were scheduled, or do we have funds set aside for this?
Actually, we are, this year, we're using our chip seal funding to go towards the micro-surfacing. And then, next year, we'll bring back our chip seal projects.
So it's not like, it's not an unforeseen cost, basically?
No, no, it's not an unforeseen cost. It's part of a, just part of a good pavement preservation program. Thank you.
Other questions?
If I could, I want to just expand a little bit on what our chair said relative to the neighborhood meetings. We do anticipate that there would be a lot of complaints about being done at night. I recall when the Washington Street Bridge was done at night, and there were a lot of complaints from the Tyrell Hills area. I don't know, I don't recall that there had been much preliminary PR work done, so I think it's important that when a contractor is selected, that that's part of their job, is to perhaps hold two or three within sections of Oak Street, because I think once people are, take the time to talk to them and explain and answer their questions, I'm not going to suggest it makes it fun, but I think people are far more understanding and they know about what to expect, so.
And one thing that I got out of the conversation is that even though at night isn't necessarily preferred, in a sense it is, because it takes, Jeff said, three days versus maybe two weeks. So it may be an inconvenience, but it'd be an inconvenience for a much shorter period of time. You might have less complaints if you add them the other way.
I have one more question. I mean, if we're gonna be handling calls on this, what is the cost comparison between doing it in the daytime? Because it states that it would be cheaper to do it at night, but not much cheaper.
Yeah, we don't have a real good feel for that. I think the, you know, the numbers that we've looked at have been primarily from nighttime operations, so if we just told them, no, you can't do it at night or evenings, and had to keep to daytime hours, we're not really sure what kind of a bid price we would get. I think the practice around the state has been to do this type of work at night.
Any other discussion? Great, great question. If no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Item number four, water tower repair grant options. I'm gonna let Mark in one minute or less kind of update everybody on what we're going here.
I can give you the abbreviated version. We presented the city council with two options for repairing the water tower. As you know, that's, it is an historic building, it's on the National Register of Historic Places, which makes it eligible for grant funding through the State Historic Preservation Office. The structure is leaking, so that needs to be repaired, and we gave you two options to pursue. We could apply by May 2nd for a grant to do repair work in 2015, and we outlined that scenario for you in option one. As we were screwing around on Thursday to get the council packet all completed, we received an email from the State Historic Preservation Office to answer questions I had asked them a couple of weeks ago about the restoration work, and in that email, which you got a copy of, the questions I asked, it seemed that the state is kind of suggesting that we may want to go through a different process and go through an architectural review process and apply for a grant for architectural review services. We figured that would be about $10,000, and we presented that to Safety and Public Works Committee, and I'll turn it back to Gary.
And that would be the motion to go forward with that, and then Mary wanted to throw in the 10% grant, matching grant. I had to say that, and it's gonna come out of PNF Committee for that.
I didn't really want to throw it in, but the suggestion was made that we might be considered more positively by the state if we are willing to put in some kind of a match, and so 10% would be $1,000, and 10% seemed adequate to me, and I am frankly suggesting that it come out of the city engineer's budgets from somewhere, and I know our chairman said, well, let PNF count the beans on that one. So I guess the bottom line is that we'll have to see where it could go.
For clarity, Mr. President, it's for Architectural Design Services that's coming out of the committee.
We could have discussion on where that comes from, or this motion could be contingent upon finding the money for the 10% grant.
Just for clarification, we're looking at option two now. You guys are recommending option two.
The architectural.
One, be sure I'm in.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
I think it was clear from the engineer and assistant engineer that another year or two is not gonna make that much difference, so the grant would then, for the $10,000, would give a better understanding of exactly what has to be done, and could give us more parameters to then apply for the other grant. So it feels like we would have a better understanding to apply for exactly what we want, whether it's more or less.
No, I'm not arguing against this, but the one thing that made me uneasy is your first question that you asked, they didn't answer.
Right.
I mean, they clearly did not answer that question. And I would like to see if you could press them a little bit more before we go ahead and spend that money to see if that actually is, you know, what is really the case. I mean, even difficult questions have answers.
Right. That's a good point.
Can you talk about the dome part?
Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing is that since we're looking at going towards the engineering report, we have until June 2nd, so if there's something, somebody feels uncomfortable or wants more questions answered, we could bring it back to the May 5 meeting if so desired. The other grant would have to be, we'd have to approve or deny it tonight, so I'm looking at your wishes. Yeah, we're going with number two, and that was the motion.
I do have a couple of quick questions, and it doesn't so much pertain to that, but I know that the water tower was sold. Looking at, help me out. Help me?
That's very confusing.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have access to repair the tower if and when it comes time to actually be able to repair it.
Ken, Mr. President, we've got, the city owns the land underneath the water tower and the water tower structure. In addition to that, we've got easement for a certain radius around the base of the water tower that falls outside of the canopy of the bowl for maintenance purposes, and then also easement for access to the tower. So even though the access is through the existing chamber building and what will be an attorney's office, we do have that access. We talked about that a little bit in committee, and I think what we'll do is send our easement document to our city attorney and have him just take a quick look at it to see if he's comfortable that that document gives us the access that we want to have in the future.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm sure you've been reading in the paper about the sale. The sale was on the chamber part, not the water tower.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Item number five, Bron InterTech proposals. I'm gonna let Jeff again, because he's quite a bit into this, one proposal, 30 seconds or less, just quickly update this.
Ken, we have two proposals. One proposal from Bron is for the Safe Roads to School project. We kept that one separate because there's different sampling and testing requirements for that particular project because of the federal funding. With the federal funding, we need to follow the schedule of material controls and a variety of other sampling and testing practices as we do that project, so they submitted a proposal for the amount of $11,536, and these are estimates based on a number of samples that we think that we will need. It could vary a little bit if, for instance, if we have more days of certain types of work, or if something, certain things happen, we could require, or could have more tests required. The second proposal is for the balance of this year's improvements. The testing primarily deals with densities, with concrete work, bituminous work, and the improvements are 1317, 1318, and 1402. That's the contract that's already been let. It's Willow Street, 10th Avenue Northeast, and South Fifth Street between Laurel and Front Street. Improvement 1319, which the council just authorized advertisement on tonight, that's the streets in the vicinity of Garfield Elementary School, and then improvement 1306, 28th Street, that one came in on the amount of $6,204, and that, of course, we would only move forward or request those services if in fact that project's moving forward this year. If not, then we would obviously not be doing that sampling and testing.
Thank you, and the motion would be to accept the proposal from Bron Engineering for $30,617 with the 28th Street project, you know, contingent upon if that project goes or not for the $6,204, and I would so move.
End of motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Item number six, Buffalo Hills Lane was discussion, there's three pages, I think you all got that, we're gonna bring it back to the next meeting, we ran out of time on that one. Item number seven, intern update, and Jeff will quickly update us on the interns that are coming through.
Okay, briefly, we're in the process right now of interviewing engineering aid interns. We had three applicants, which was really down from previous years. Tomorrow, we'll be interviewing candidates for the code enforcement intern, and we don't have a schedule set yet for the GIS intern or for the two summer positions at the street department, but those will be occurring probably in the next few weeks. Those other positions, generally, we don't bring people on until the 1st of June, but in general, our, you know, we were quite surprised this year that we did not see the number of applications for these intern positions that we normally see, so.
That'd be our update.
I think our employment rate must have improved.
Item number eight will be the 1319 Garfield School carryover from the last council meeting, and the motion would be to adopt the resolution approving plans and specs and advertisement for bids for the project 1319.
Second.
Any other discussion? That's roll call, right?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkin Hagan?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, end of report.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item one has been dealt with. Item two is the Transit ITS purchase, and Mr. Edgar Halsuther's gonna give us a little update as to what this thing is and where our portion of the money's gonna come from.
By May, the, the project is our computer-aided dispatch system with the transit vehicles. The Transportation Committee, both city and the county transportation committees have been talking about this for a little bit over a year. We were able to amend our contract with MINDOT Office of Transit to fund the computer-aided dispatching system, and essentially, this is going to dramatically simplify the dispatching process. It's gonna take written notes out of the buses. Each of the buses is gonna have a tablet, and instead of having the dispatcher on a radio conversing with the different buses, what this will provide is the dispatcher will simply have a screen and through GIS be able to observe the exact locations of all buses at all times, and will be able to simply, and it'll prove as time goes on, but will populate a database of our users and origins destinations, and they'll simply be able to just drag users from origin to destination, immediately send that to a bus. A dispatcher will not have to, rather, a driver will not have to acknowledge anything. That particular pickup or trip will just pop up right on their, on their tablet in order. The whole dispatching system is gonna greatly improve the overall efficiency and scheduling of the buses and where they're at, how they're picking people up, how they're delivering them. That whole project was about $100,000 project. There's a local match, 20% local match. On the local matches, half of it is ours, half of it would be paid by the county and City of Baxter. Our particular share of that, we do have a transit fund that has been set up, and it's quite well-funded at the moment. We have funds in the transit fund to pay for our share of the capital. And with that, our staff's recommendation would be to approve the amended resolution. This is a resolution that the council had previously adopted, but MINDOT wanted to have the, I think the very last paragraph where the, within the resolution, they wanted us to identify the individuals that would be signing on behalf of the city, so that's the amendment.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt a resolution that the City of Brainerd resolves to authorize two persons by title to execute the grant contract with MINDOT, those two persons being President of the Council of Dale Parks and City of Brainerd Mayor James E. Wollene, to execute the aforementioned agreement and any amendments thereto for state funding of intelligent transportation system, otherwise known as ITS, and related services. An ISO move.
Second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call. Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkin Hagan?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Item three is community action. There's a request from Ken to mean action to contribute to the American Celebration in 2014 in Brainerd. The request is for $80,000 city contribution and $500 score funds. The motion is to approve $8,500 from the City of Brainerd Special Projects, an ISO move.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to note, the $500 that was requested from score funds is not, this, we have used score funds for this in the past. This particular project is not eligible for the recycling funds, so the motion is to approve the $8,500 request, but all to come from Special Projects, which has roughly $38,000.
Evans?
Yes.
Does this include the fireworks? I mean, this is the whole thing, this ain't gonna be a separate thing for fireworks, Only requests, this'll cover everything. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, just that after the vote, however it goes. Nancy Kraus, our community action director, has asked for a moment just to give us an update on how the project is going, particularly some of the things that are working around the field construction, and as Mr. Sheeler just asked, a great question.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the $8,500?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Now would be time for Nancy to come up and entertain some questions, or at least...
First of all, thank you very much for your continued support of the American Celebration. We welcome about 125,000 people to the Brainerd Lakes area. There isn't a parking place to be had, and it means heads and beds and gas being bought and fast food being consumed, and people, more importantly, people building memories with family and friends and enjoying a day that we celebrate, the birth of our nation, and being with family and friends on a carefree day. So I do personally thank you very much for your support. Now, every year, well, most every year, I can't say every year, but most every year, there's always a challenge, one or two, you know, that you have to deal with. This year, the challenge is the construction at the football field, as you know, will begin probably May 1st, and construction will take place from the football stadium all the way back to the back pond. So with that in mind, we had to think of another location where we could put the stage, because it will not, that whole area will be fenced off. So what we did was, I'm gonna, what we're going to do, first of all, the fireworks will be in the same location that they've always been in. School District is going to construct the road from that north gate all the way back to the back pond and first, so we will be able to get our trucks back there without sinking into mud in case of rain, and so we're thankful that at least that location will be the same. People will be able to sit on the hill to observe the fireworks, that's the sledding hill. At the bottom of that hill and little ways out will be a construction fence, and they won't be able to go any further than that. We're proposing to put the stage for the entertainment in the Fifth Street parking lot. It would, the back of the stage would be towards the library, it would face the school. That way, people can sit in the parking lot on the grass, and talking with Chief McQuiston, we have proposed to close down Fifth Street from Maple to Quince from about 3:30 in the afternoon until after the fireworks. That's for safety reasons. There's going to be a lot of people conjugating up there, and the last thing we need is traffic or parking, and we need to be able to get emergency vehicles back through there if that should be necessary. With that in mind, we would then leave open East River Road, so that would stay open all day, and people would be, it's a nice way to get out of the area. Parking, we will lose two rows of parking on the north side of the East River Road parking lot, so parking will be a premium, because obviously you won't be able to park in the Fifth Street lot either, which brings me to another request that I have, and that is, could I possibly take over on the 4th of July, the library parking lot? I find that I need places for handicap people in particular, so that they can get to the parade in and out as quickly as possible. So that would be a request that I have. So that would be a request that I have. The corn on the cob feed would take place at the Eagles Club. So again, easy in and out. People will be able to park in the, on the road or in the county lot and get in and out of there without going down Laurel Street and disturbing that pattern through there. Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would be concerned that perhaps the library board should address the issue of the lot and we do have a meeting on Wednesday evening.
Okay.
It's our regular library board meeting. I hesitate to say this because I might get really creamed by others on the board. I personally think it can work, but I would need to be respectful of what the other board members say. I think the one thing that they would insist on and I would insist on is that the lot be cleaned afterwards.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, well cleaned and that nothing would be destroyed.
Nothing.
And that's only reasonable.
Oh, absolutely.
But I would ask that at least the library board be given the opportunity to address.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nancy, I might be misunderstanding something, but no, East River Road is going to be opened up to College Drive, correct?
Correct.
But it looks here, according to the key, that you have Jenny Street closed.
Jenny Street.
That goes down to east, that's how you get out of East River Road back into town unless you're going to take College Drive. If you're looking in the south part, look off of southwest of Boom Lake, right by the river, there's a red dot there and the red dots are road closures?
Oh, we do close off, we put one barricade, yeah, we put one barricade there only because we don't want a lot of people into Kiwanis Park. People still go, can get in and out, but we do, we do close that normally. The new closure would be Fifth Street, but open up East River Road from Laurel down to College Drive. Kiwanis Park would still be closed off from about noon until six because we've got, we've got units that, especially the marching units, that conjugate in there. They're staged in the park.
Right.
For the shade.
Usually where it backs up.
I hear you say that East College Drive is not going to be closed?
College Drive would not be closed until about three-thirty.
Okay.
And that, we did last year, the roundabouts helped us tremendously. We staged the parade behind the college and about three-thirty brought them the opposite way around the roundabout, down the opposite side of the street to go onto the parade route. And then when they came off, when they came past the high school down the hill, they went around the opposite direction on the roundabout so that they took the two lane and straight back up the hill and it, it really worked really well for us. And we were able to keep College Drive open, which is a tremendous benefit to everybody.
Nancy, could you give me something in writing to present to the library board?
Oh, I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
And would you like me to be there? I'd be happy to be there.
If you can.
Oh, sure.
We start at six.
Perfect.
So be there at six sharp because we move right along.
Is that, is that AM?
Yeah.
No.
I can be there at six AM, not a problem.
And we meet in the, in the small meeting room of the library.
But I will get you something also.
Thank you. I really appreciate, you know, we have to look at a little, even a few hours in advance.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Nancy? Any none? Thank you very much.
Thank you. One other thing I want you to do is to mark your calendars for June twenty-seventh. It is a Sunday. That will be the celebration of the completion of the Paul Bunyan Trail from Crow Wing State Park through Brainerd and on up to Bemidji. It was Terry McGahy's dream to have a hundred and twelve miles of Crow Wing State Park.
July twenty-seventh?
July twenty-seventh. July, did I say June?
You said June.
No, not June. July twenty-seventh. And you will receive invitations to attend that. We'll have a luncheon down at the Crow Wing State Park. We'll start the ride at the trailhead in Brainerd and conclude down there with a lunch provided by the Eagles Club. So just mark your calendars for that because it's an important celebration that we all need to celebrate. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for allowing the digression. So items four and five are consent calendar items. Item six, the other we all received, the news that our transit coordinator has submitted his resignation. The motion on this item is to accept the resignation. His final date will be May second and accept that with regret and to request or to authorize to proceed immediately with the hiring process for the new transit coordinator position, including the revised job requirements that's attached, an iso move.
Second.
Other discussion?
I want to thank him for his two week notice.
Yeah. He will be missed.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
End of report. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing for the MS four permit.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fryhaver.
Thank you, Mr. President and the council. We're at our twenty thirteen annual stormwater report. This year, we do this annually. This year is probably a little more form or educational. We do have a bunch of new requirements. We'll get into that as, as we proceed here. Purpose of the meeting, it's basically to educate the public on the importance of stormwater. Also, it's an annual time to give the public an opportunity to learn about our MS four and to give comments if they feel we need to do more or if we should be doing different So what is part of our MS four? Basically, we have a giant thing called a SWIP or a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. It basically addresses six minimum control measures. As you can see, they're listed there. They cover education and public outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff controls, post-construction stormwater management, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. Basically, the goal of the SWIP is to basically create these best management practices that will best reduce and eliminate sediment, best would improve our lakes, rivers and streams. The City of Brainerd's SWIP currently has forty-four BMPs with our new permit. We should be able to maintain that forty-four BMPs. We're just going to need to change or adapt maybe on how we become a little better at doing some of our BMPs that we're currently doing. Some of the accomplishments that we did last year that we, a lot of these things are required as part of our permit. We inspected seventy-four alt falls last year, which is pretty much the majority of ours. Normally, we only do twenty percent, but last year, we figured we, since we had a little bit of time, we tried to cover as much as we could. We inspected ten of our stormwater ponds. One of the big projects we did last year was clean out J.C.'s Park, the ditch that runs from southeast nineteenth street to Rosewood Street. We also screened out the street sweeping pile that had been accumulating for years. We've used a lot of that fill at the arboretum and will continue to do so this year. We repaired two stormwater ponds at Brainerd Oaks and the Willow's Edition ponds. Those ponds weren't quite functioning as we had planned and corrected them and they seem to be working much better now. We did add one more storm pond as part of the Buffalo Hills project that's located along Buffalo Hills Trail or Buffalo Hills Road and we replaced the culverts under, under the new trail at Little Buffalo Creek and that's the picture there on the side. A few other accomplishments that we did last year, we didn't do a lot of inspections because we didn't have a lot of building, but we did seven formal erosion control inspections. One of our other minimum control measures is, was, is this annual spring cleanup, which we spent sixteen hundred dollars on roughly. We did remove two septic tanks for property owners that connect to the city. Cleaned roughly eighty-three thousand linear feet of sanitary sewer and we swept out approximately fifteen hundred cubic yards of material from our streets and that's basically spring and fall. Some of the unfinished tasks, some items that we still have, the big one we have is addressing salt storage at the street department facility. That's a picture of our salt, salt sand piles. As you can see, we don't have protective cover on it, so we lose a lot of our salt to rain and basically any, that's one item we definitely need to address in the near future. And then the other item we need to address is the spring cleanup or the voucher or how we want to deal with the annual cleanup. I know council is, or in committee is looking at getting the neighborhoods back to doing the, the spring cleanup and that, and that would meet that standard, but if something happens, we need to make sure we address that as, that is one of our best management Some of our MS four items for next year, the big one, one of the big things we're doing this year is working with the Soil Water Conservation District in the Buffalo, Little Buffalo Creek neighborhood in South Brainerd and we're looking at installing twenty rain gardens. It's a project the city worked with the Conservation District on. It's funded through legacy funds. The city helped design the rainwater gardens. The Conservation District is going to be installing them with a local contractor here starting probably around May fifteenth. The project is hoping to be done by the first of June, so it should be a real quick turnaround. It's working with individual property owners. Each of these property owners agreed to maintain them, maintain the rain gardens so they look nice in the future. And then the city basically agreed to maintain the inlets. There's a little catch basin that goes behind the curb, collects sediment, so twice, two or three times a year, we'll just have to go and just remove the sediment. In the neighborhoods they're at, they, they should have minimal sediment accumulation. But the idea of these is they're going to reduce flow, you know, they'll infiltrate water instead of letting water dump directly into the Mississippi River, so it'll, it should improve the water quality of Little Buffalo Creek watershed. Our new MS four permit, we actually just got this approved March seventeenth of this year, so it's, it's already in effect. The nice thing that we have, we have twelve months to implement new changes. So all the changes that we have next year, March seventeenth, we need, we need to have them done by. It is quite an extensive list and there is quite a lot of things to do, so there'll be a bunch of items throughout the year that we'll probably approach community and council on adopting different things. One of the big things we'll be doing is following the lead of the Minnesota City Stormwater Coalition, which the city is a part of. They're going to be, the best asset the city has. They're coming up with different items, so each city doesn't have to reinvent the wheel on how we're going to manage these best management practices. It'll be really good because it'll be real consistent between the cities. We're not going to do something different that another city is going to be doing, so it's going to be real hard for MPCA to pick on us. It'll also be more efficient. We don't need to spend a ton of staff time developing something that as a group we can come up with. So we'll probably work with the City of Baxter and the Soil Water Conservation District on some of these BMPs, so we're not like repetitive as well. Some of the other new tasks specifically, one of the big things we have to do is upgrade our ordinances. MPCA basically said our erosion control, stormwater management and stormwater and urban runoff pollution isn't good enough. We adopted most of these about five years ago when we had our original permit and basically they're saying they're not, they've upped the standard. We need to, to relook at them, so we'll probably take from the Stormwater Coalition, they'll have some sample ordinances and we'll have to tweak them or as, as we see fit for Brainerd. One of the other big things which we don't really have in place is enforcement response procedures. And I guess we do somewhat have this in place for construction sites, but we're going to, we have to get more specific and more protocol on exactly how we address runoff from construction sites if someone has an illegal, you know, they're discharging sediment or if we find an illicit discharge, someone dumped oil down a drain. We need to be real specific on how we're going to correct that problem and, you know, do we find them and stuff like that. And then same thing with maintenance of our BMPs. How are we, if we find a storm pond that isn't, is failing, how are we going to address that? We need to get, MPCA is looking at being real specific. We, we just can't say we're just going to fix it. We, we need to have a protocol. How often we're going to inspect it? When we find an issue, how quickly are we going to address it? They're get, it's going to be a lot of paperwork and a lot of protocol, but we're going to have to develop all that. We need to continue our public education to the residents and that's something that'll work real good with, working with Baxter and the Soil Water Conservation District. The rain gardens will actually be a real good one. I know I've been working with Beth Hibbert at the Soil Water and with the rain gardens, that'll be a real good opportunity to educate the public on what the benefits of the rain gardens are, you know, especially in the South Brainerd neighborhood. People will be driving by those all day, they'll, they'll see what benefits we can do. One of the other big things we need to focus on is illicit discharge. It's something we haven't really focused on. It doesn't seem to be a problem in the City of Brainerd, but the MPCA is requiring us to take a real good look at if we can find more illicit discharges, which I don't think we really have that problem. Like I said, we need to develop a lot of written procedures for all of our tasks. That's kind of a list of different ones we need to have. How, when we get, if someone calls in and says someone's dumping oil down, we need to, who's going to address it? How's it going to get addressed? When's it going to get addressed? We need to document all that. We need to do that for spills, our site plan review. I think we have that okay, but we're going to have to get it, like I said, written paper. And how we do inspections. Right now, we have forums and stuff, so we have a very, we do a real good job on doing it all. Now we just have to document it and say, this is how we're going to do it, when we're going to do it, who's going to do it. So it's just a lot of paperwork, but that's stuff we'll be doing throughout the year. Other tasks we need to do, big thing will be is training. It's not going to just be engineering staff. We're also going to, and, and street and sewer staff, it's going to have to be almost anyone who's out in the city, who does fieldwork in the city. Parks Department staff, police department, fire department, all the Brainerd public utilities. Basically, the idea what MPCA is looking for is a police officer driving down the street, he sees someone dumping leaves down the storm sewer. He needs to realize that that's an illicit discharge. It's not supposed to happen and we need to follow protocol and how to correct that. So it's basically, the idea is more eyes on the street and people know what to do if, if we do find stuff. So that's something throughout the year, we'll have to come up with an idea of how to do training and implement that stuff. The other thing we're going to have to do is just continue to update our storm sewer map. I think we're pretty good on that, but that's always changing. We always find we have something to tweak. So with that, if you have any questions on kind of what we need to be, or what we'll be doing for the next year or other related stormwater issues, I'll glad to have.
Mr. Chair, if I may, on the slide that talked about changes in ordinances, are those ordinances primarily geared toward the business and commercial or how do they affect the residential sections of town?
I would say the stormwater management one is more for development, new development or redevelopment. The erosion sediment control one is probably for anyone, but it's still more geared towards the development. But if someone's, you know, regrading their lawn, decides to take all the topsoil off and sod it, if they don't sod it right away and they're putting, their topsoil runs into the street, then that ordinance would, would come onto them. But most of them are set up for development, redevelopment.
Or new building.
Or new building.
New buildings. Thank you.
About wind erosion, Lake or that area by the railroad tracks, so all of a sudden everything is just burnt and dead off, somebody just went in and killed the whole area. I mean, is that something that gets reported? Is that something?
That's a good question. I don't really know how to answer wind, wind erosion. I guess if it was stuff that, you know, was caused sediment to be accumulated in the street, that would be something that probably would fall under us and that's something we could possibly issue a nuisance to the property owner whose soil it is.
Then I heard you, the other question would be, I heard you saying leaves in the gutters and I see now during cleanup time, people, you know, even in northeast, I saw yesterday somebody raking all their leaves into, into the street. You're saying, don't do that? That's illegal.
That is, exactly. That's, yeah, and I, it basically considered a nuisance and illicit discharge and I, I believe our ordinance even defined that.
Okay, thank you.
Question. So, okay, you know, you mentioned new ordinances, so can we expect to see some ordinances submitted to the council from engineering regarding those?
Yeah, we'll, once, when the, I think what we'll do it is with the Minnesota Stormwater Coalition, they'll come up with some draft ideas, other cities that have had approval from MPCA. We'll take a look at them, see how they kind of compare to what we have. We don't need to do a lot of changing. We're, we're, our ordinance is actually really good. It's just, like I said, MPCA set that bar just a little higher, so we need to set ours just a little higher. So we'll come up with a draft and bring it to council and see if it meets the needs of the city or if we need to tweak it, but like I said, we're, we're going to have to raise our bar a little bit, but I don't think we're going to do dramatic change over what we have, unless the council wishes to, I guess.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I, I have one. Just with the, with the ordinance possible changes, you, you had talked and we're a bit. talked, and, and we're a bit concerned about the enforcement portion of it. Is that also going to be somewhat of a suggestion in how that's going to be, you know, be able to be enforced?
We need to, with, with the way we enforce it, we need to just be very clear on, you know, if there's this sort of violation, how we want to enforce it. We just need to have protocols set up. I mean, for example, with, on construction sites currently, typically if a property owner, like last year we had a property owner, they, they didn't have, I mean, all of their site was a disaster and said, we basically just wrote, gave them a written letter and said, correct it. You know, we're not trying to be, we're just trying to get the problem solved. If they probably ignored that letter, we might send them another one, but we just need to set a protocol, how we're going to do it, how we're going to step up the violations or if it's really severe. So I, I think we're open to how we want to do.
That again, I guess is what I'm asking, is it more than likely that'll also be a suggestion from them as well?
Oh, exactly. They'll come up with a protocol on, on that, and we can decide if we think we need to be more strict or maybe a little lenient. Yep.
One more question. Then you're looking more to educate than citeate?
Well, yes, but at, at a certain point, MPCA is going to expect us to citeate. I mean, we, we can't, we can, we can try to help, especially if we have repeat offenders. I mean, we haven't had a lot of issues, but at the same point, we haven't been doing as much looking for them either. We're kind of on a complaint basis or if we see something, but if with more eyes on the street, I don't know if you see more issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
If I may, thank you, Mr. President. One of the things you did was show a beautiful slide of, there was a petition last year for capital improvements for salt and sand storage, and how is that going to be addressed? Because, I mean, one of the things that we're looking at is that, that salt is dissipating into the ground, and I mean, that's not what you call a, a good deal. And so is that going to be somehow addressed? And I would imagine that it's up to the council. I suppose to find funding or to, to plan another capital improvement, but I think that's one of the things that, in looking at that, that needs to be truly addressed too.
It's one of those things that, it's, it's a best management practice. We are required by our permit to meet obligations. And one of the things is our municipal good housekeeping, our stockpiles, which is that is a stockpile. We need to make sure our stockpiles are not polluting. Obviously, we are in violation of that, so we need to find a way to correct that, is what we need to do.
Thank you.
I think the real question is, does MPCA have measurable objectives, and have they
given us a full report of those objectives, how they've measured them, what they expect to see happen, and has it happened?
Currently, MPCA does not have, we don't have like what you'd say is a TMDL or a specific, a specific threshold for certain pollution levels. Little Buffalo Creek is an impaired water, and they probably will in the near future have a TMDL done on that. The Mississippi does have a TMDL on already, south, south of the metro. Eventually, those are going to come into play with us. They're, they're currently not set at, at that point. Currently, the way the permit reads is, we need to, you know, do basically the best you can to prevent pollution. It's kind of how, kind of the way it's worded. So, but there's no specific thing that says you can have this much run on.
Thank you.
Can you back up one slide? When I saw this list and, and also hearing people say, you know, you can't rake leaves in the road, you can't do this or that, the one thing that's missing in there is education of the residents. And, and I think that's really important, that you have, you train the staff as, as to what needs to be done. Somehow or another, you have to also educate the public as to do's and don'ts, and whether it's in the newsletter, whether it's in a, some type of PSA. But to me, it's really important that it's on there, and it's, it, it should be on there, I should say, and I don't see it.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we do have a website with a lot of this info. Obviously, people got to get to the website. We also do have brochures. You know, and that's something we, you know, we haven't been super formal on our public education, but I do know I, I've already talked with, about our next newsletter. That's something that we probably, you know, before fall, it'd probably be a good time to, to mention the raking leaves into the gutter. I, I know we, certain areas in town where it's very common, or to dump them right into the creek, if you're right next to the creek. So that would be a good opportunity for that. I, I've heard some cities, you know, they, they just target certain neighborhoods every, every year, you know, maybe one northeast this year, or North Brainerd or whatever, they, they just send out a little, an additional flyer relating to, you know, you know, washing your car and best management practice, stuff like that that you can do. But, yeah, there's, there's plenty of opportunity for us to, to try to educate the public.
Is that a specific task that you could put in your MS four?
Yeah, and we, and we do have certain ones on, on education to do. I know, like with BPU, we put stuff in their, in their newsletter, and then trying to think what other one we have specifically to public education, but.
I mean, in the MS four, do you someplace put in there that one of your objectives, goals is to educate the public?
Yes, yes. Yep. That's one of our objectives, is to educate the public. And I know, like every year we report on, we're supposed to try to figure out how many people looked at our website and how many brochures we handed out. Some of that stuff's pretty hard to tell, you know, if you just make a bunch of copies and they, they're all gone, but that is, that is one of the objectives.
And the street sweeping, and that would be for leaves and for sand, and the sand has salt in it, and that goes into your storm sewers, which is dumped into, you know, what pressure did he put on the city for timing of cleaning that up?
All we currently have committed to is basically do it, maintaining it twice, twice a year, so we do spring and fall. Timing wise, we basically just, we try to sweep when it's opportun, I mean, basically as soon as the snow's off, we've been sweeping. In fact, we swept fair amount of downtown before we had the snow, and we applied more sand salt, so we end up having to redo that. But we're pretty much on top of it as soon as we can. And, I mean, I guess from MPCA level, they, that's what they want, is us to do the best we can. Same thing in the fall, we kind of just try to time the, sweeping in the fall when most of the leaves are falling. I mean, leaves obviously take forever to fall sometimes, and you, you can't wait too long or, or the ground freezes, so, I mean, we just, you do, do the best you can with, with the resources you have. But there is no direction from MPCA specifically to that.
Anybody else have any other question? Do you need any type of resolution from us?
No, it is a, it is a public hearing, so I guess we just need to, the public an opportunity to comment if.
Does anyone here suggest a public hearing? We'll open it up at 8:28. Does anybody want to talk about the MS four program that the city's, our annual program? Anybody want to talk about the MS four public hearing? One more time. Does anybody want to come forward to talk about the MS four? Seeing no one, we'll close the hearing at 8:29. Who's going to take the next one?
I'll be the representative committee.
Construction activity at 1420 Quin Street, status of.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had this in Safety and Public Works Committee at 1420 Quin Street. This is the Terry Kinder project there. And I think we've had enough warnings. I know Mrs. Matten, Miss Matten, had asked about what the penalty would be, and it was also asked a couple of times. And I think what we came, and I think I would make the motion that we would follow staff's recommendation here, and that, you know, we would go with...
Five days.
Mary wants to go with five days, so that would be the motion, to go with five days and, and go with the $100 a day penalty until the portion that we had asked to be completed, that was supposed to be completed as of today, has not been completed. So, you know, we're going to give them another five days, and then, you know, and then there'll be a $100 a day penalty. And again, I would imagine we'll bring this to the next council meeting, you know, because we'll have to see where we're at with that. And that would be the motion.
Second.
Is there other discussion?
Just, just, I'm curious, did they give any reason as to why they had not met the deadline?
I imagine they were invited to this, and I have not. And I'm hoping that maybe for now on, we can bring it to Safety and Public Works prior to this, because then I can, being it's on a council, sometimes I don't take the initiative. The last time I took the initiative to drive out there, being I was on my committee, and I would take a few extra steps, but being it was thrown on the council, sometimes I'm just kind of leaving it out there for all of us to do that, and then nothing happens either. So if we can go to Safety and Public Works, I would stay on top of it. I do stop by there and just about regularly, so I think, okay, go ahead.
Well, I'm waiting for Jeff. Jeff will respond too. Since the memo has been set, sent last, last Thursday, we do have some additional suggestions maybe on how to address the fine issue, if the council's willing to listen to maybe some other options?
Yes. Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, we were, we had some discussion today about this, the thought of doing this incremental completion where if, you know, the ordinance requires the, the completion of the entire exterior within the certain timeframe. That means, you know, all the, everything, the sheeting, the weatherproofing, I mean, done, including, you know, the yard, I mean, just everything that's been disturbed, completed. And kind of, we, we've sort of deviated from, from looking at a complete completion, a final completion, to some, sort of an incremental approach and, and get this completed by this time, and, and something else completed by this time, and, and then, you know, eventually working towards a, a final, but we're just not, we're concerned about how long that's, you know, that's going to take, especially seeing that we haven't had much follow-through on, on this first incremental completion. So as we talked about it on a staff level today, we kind of thought maybe the, the better approach, instead of the incremental completions, is just to say that, you know, the, that the ordinance requires completion of the exterior and give him a date certain that that exterior has got to be completed. I mean, everything completed, not, not just a portion of it, but all of it completed. And at that point, if he doesn't, if it's not completed, he'll start receiving the $100 a day citations. We've talked a little bit about what a reasonable time period would be for that completion, and our thought would be, you know, we know that it's the spring, he's going to have rain days, that type of thing, but, but we sort of thought that maybe something like the end of May, where if, if, if it's not completed by, by that particular time, then, then he'll start receiving the $100 per day citations. We said, we, we'd like to throw that out there as an option.
Mark?
Yeah, if you look at the photograph that we presented to you, those were taken as of about 3 o'clock this afternoon. And as you can see, the project is woefully short of being complete. It's going to take him quite a long time to, to complete this. The three, five, seven day type of thing was if the project was further along, that it still wasn't done, but further along, that he might, he missed his deadline, and he could complete it in a week. $100 a day, that's too bad, but $100 a day, it's going to take him weeks to get this done. So I guess, from what Jeff is saying, you know, the planning department, the ordinance specifies that it's up to the building official in the, in the planning department to determine whether or not a project's complete. And I guess from the planning department's perspective, if the council's willing to reconsider the fine issue, we might as well set a date, unless we've got something that was just passed through here.
Nope.
Set a date, a reasonable date. I guess it's one last, last, last chance. And if it's not complete by then, is when the fines kick in.
Ask the question. At the meeting that we visited last with Mr. Kinder, there were specifics though that had been identified. And I, as I recall, they were the piecemeal or incremental. They didn't involve all of this. And I thought that's what we were addressing tonight. I don't disagree with what you're saying, that there needs to be a completion date as well. But perhaps I'm remembering it incorrectly, but I thought there were a series of things that we had identified, that we had said to Mr. Kinder, you must have these done by such and such a time. He hasn't got those things done. So in what I was thinking was that this five day period would be for him to finish those specific things if they are not the $100 a day kicks in automatically. Your suggestion on the larger picture, I think, is very reasonable, but could we look at it in two steps? Because if we say that, let's say if we, the original motion, based on the few things, if that's rescinded, go with the larger picture, he may not do any of it until the very last minute, maybe not at all. Whereas maybe if we go with the incremental approach, we'll get something done, which would be a big improvement, and then look at the big picture. Am I making it clear at all?
I, I, I follow you.
Yes, and I want to know, you know, the last time when I talked to Terry, you know, he knew he was in trouble, and he promised that he would have this, and he, and all, Tim was there, he would have the windows roof and have it sealed, and that was your concern, Tim. And we're trying to get that portion done. And basically, we were, the staff was suggesting to go to June 30th, and I didn't want to, you know, have this thing delayed to June 30th. As you can see, it doesn't help. And now, instead of that, we went with the two week, at least seal this project, because that's important for the material, the lumber and everything else.
I think our staff concern was that.
Can you hear me? Tim? Any mic coming up?
In our staff discussion today between Jeff and Mark and I, our concern is if we keep on this piecemeal track, we're going to be in front of you probably every council meeting. And we're just trying to set a deadline and give them a, amount of time that it physically can be completed, and if it isn't from there, then the fines start. Another option is, as Mary suggested, the five days for the, the list we give them.
Right.
You know, fine them from that day on to the next deadline.
This is our third extension.
You know, as always, we're not in it for fines, we're in it to get compliance.
Yeah.
Been a long time.
And we're going to start getting the phone calls from the neighboring property owners.
Has he contacted you guys and said?
Not since that council meeting.
Well, how about five days to complete the original list, and then until June 1st for the entire package? Why not that kind of?
And I agree with you.
Would that work?
I see the steps, because that's our measuring tool. You throwing the whole picture out there for, you know, June 31st, the first timer, we have no measuring tool, and it's taking baby steps to move this. He's been in this room more than he's been on the job.
So if he hasn't got these requests that we made two weeks ago done in five days, then we start fining.
Yes.
Mark?
I was going to suggest, if that's the route you want to choose, he's had his last, last chance then. It's $100 a day until he completes what you want completed. And then, once that gets completed, then we take it. He's got it till June 1st.
There should be consequences, because...
Faster he works, the less the fine.
And I agree with that, because Dolly had asked last time, and we told them, please don't bring it back here. It was brought up in committee, we told them, don't come back to this council meeting. And we just can't continue having, well, let's go another couple weeks. And so we set a narrow window with some items that need to be done that addresses Tim's concerns about sealing this from the rain and the, and the weather, and that's kind of a crucial element in building.
It is.
May I suggest that if we have five days, we actually make it through the end of Sunday night. That's, you know, his staff aren't going to go out on, shouldn't have.
Should we go to seven?
Okay, okay. I'm fine. And then after the seven days, then the period begins till June 1st, if that's what you think is reasonable, to complete the rest? Include that in the motion, if you'll allow me to?
Yes.
Or you, you made the motion, I seconded it. Okay.
Part of the motion, and it's part of her second, if everybody understands where we're going with this, if it needs to be repeated. Go ahead, Mark.
I don't.
I don't. I'm not sure, are we, are we?
The motion is to give them, no. The motion is that we're giving him seven days to complete what he was supposed to complete at the last council meeting, which was the windows roof and seal and the trusses and, and the tar paper. So we're giving him seven more days, because he was supposed to have it done today. If he doesn't have it in seven days, the fines will start on that portion until it's completed.
That's right.
But in the meantime, he does have this extension. If he meets that in the seven days, he would just then continue with your June 1st.
Without the fines. If he hasn't completed in seven days, he progresses on to finish the project by June 1st.
Right.
And second, I think we said was a month.
That is.
I think that's as good as we're going to give.
I'm just, you know, I'm certainly in favor of the motion, because I...
I'm just, you know, I'm certainly in favor of the motion, because I, I have nearly the experience with this particular issue that some others have. My only question is, we're giving him an extension, which is, I don't have a problem with that anyway, because I, I agree with our, our building inspector, we're not really here to fine, we're here to gain compliance, but he hasn't asked for an extension. And I'm just wondering what, what we're doing. I mean, the deal was, you have it by this date, if he'd have been here and said, I just can't because, and you fill in the blank, that'd be a totally different thing. I'm questioning why he's not being fined, based on what happened at the, at the last meeting. I know you guys don't want to see him every day, but I won't mind, because he's, he, we work for him. On the other side of the coin, part of our job is to maintain order in the building codes, and, and he was told, and agreed to, a specific date, and hasn't asked for any extension. And so, I'm, I'm just wondering why we're, and I don't disagree with you, but I think that I understood the city attorney to indicate that we had to make a formal motion in order to start the fine.
I think to put him on specific notice that he's going to be fined.
Okay. Well, that makes sense, I didn't hear that part.
I didn't hear it either.
I'm sorry.
So, is everybody clear on the motion? Basically, he's getting seven days to finish. Will this be specific?
Yeah.
To finish the project that he was supposed to have done today, if he does not, could be fined a hundred dollars a day. So, we, we should probably clarify when that seventh day is, whether it's on Monday or Tuesday, you know?
Tim?
Monday? Gives him a week from today?
Yep.
And then the other part of the motion is that from, he has told June 1st to complete the entire project.
I believe June 2nd is a Monday.
June 2nd, whatever.
I believe so.
Can that second part be specific regarding penalty?
Okay.
If he doesn't complete it? So, we don't have to do this again on June 3rd?
Sure.
Make it specific right now as to what's going to happen.
So, the same penalty would apply after June 1st for what we're penalizing for a week from today?
Well, the only question would be, I would have them as staff, is we come to June 2nd, and we start penalizing a hundred dollars a day, we're still not getting the project completed.
We may not, we may.
We have no financial guarantee.
Right, we're, it's, it's not going to get finished, I mean.
So, then the second meeting of June, you'll bring it to us and say.
Okay.
But, but we're in the same position now, we don't have that now.
Yeah.
I mean, if you don't find him, he's not going to finish it, if we find him, he's not going to finish it. Might as well find him and not, have him not finish it. Because there's going to be other people watching this going, well, jeez, you know, if they didn't find him, they won't find me, I mean, here's my question, when we set the first penalty, how come that wasn't specific? When we set a date and a time, and this is what was going to happen, I'm, I'm a little confused on that.
And I, and I know the question was asked, what would be the consequences if he, if, you know, he did not finish it? And I just kind of cautioned him, please don't come back here, because I didn't think you guys were going to be very easy on him, and I said that, and that's what you guys are doing right now, is you're not going to be very easy on him.
I think I really have to, have to give a word of defense here to our chairman. I think Mr. Sheeler tried, bent over backwards to be considerate of him. He did that, and, and you sat there and you said, now Terry, you know that this has been a, a bone of contention for a long time, people are angry, but I'm willing to work with you. And, so we do feel betrayed, and, but I think, you know, Gary really did lay it out, and I thought it was clear that there would be a penalty, I thought it was.
What's the protocol for letting him know what our decision is pending?
Tim, Mark and I will draft a letter and send to him, so he gets notification.
Would he be notified tomorrow morning to give him as much?
Yep, I try to stop by, I try to stay on top of the site every day, at least once a day, get all this, so I'll try to, sometimes he's hard to catch, but I'll make a point of getting a hold of him.
Would it be more effective if a police officer were to stop by with an envelope?
That always wakes me up.
I'm still kind of going back to my question as to what didn't we do the first time when we said when it wasn't finished by this date, there was going to be a fine?
We didn't listen to Dolly.
No, no, I'm serious, I want to know, because the next time we set a date, make sure that we do that, so we don't come back and say, well, I know we said the 22nd, but actually, we mean the 3rd, the 1st of June. What did we not do?
Eric, can you call, clarify that?
Yeah, I guess, just to be clear, in order to assess the fine, there has to be an administrative citation in order to correct here. I don't believe that that has been issued to him.
Okay.
So, now we know going forward.
That we need to order.
And that doesn't necessarily need council action, staff can create that.
Right.
Based upon the direction we just received from state, from council, so after we take care of this first seven day issue, we can also clarify with the builder that June 1st is the next deadline too, without having to bring this issue back to council.
Just to clarify what Dave's saying, I'll take 20 lashes for being a bad chairman.
I don't know, no, no.
No, I'm joking, I'm joking.
He and App says, okay.
I thought you were.
My question is, by June 2nd, we have to have the exterior buttoned up, windows, siding, shingles, everything, I'm assuming, yes, I mean, exterior only, not interior, just exterior?
Just for clarification on this whole issue, this is a zoning issue we're dealing with right now, the completion of it, but it's starting to develop into a building issue because of the exposure of the materials aren't even they should be.
Right.
So, yes, the ordinance states he has to have it finished on the exterior.
Okay.
All the building issues, and.
The final grade and all dirt removed, and the boulders moved, removed, and the bricks there, that are there, I mean, I, if I was a neighbor, I would just be irate. So, I'm, I'm just curious, is that by June 2nd, is that stuff supposed to be removed?
That's what he's going to be given his notice on, to be finished by June 2nd.
I have one more question, can we withhold building permits from somebody like this that doesn't conform to city, I mean, is there somewhere that you can say, now you're not getting another building permit, because you have, you've still got something that's not going, or?
I would think we would be able to do that with being that the issue that he's not meeting the zoning ordinance. It's, it's very difficult to do that with a building permit.
Eric?
Yeah, and that was something that was just raised to me as a, as a potential thing to look into, and I, I need to look into that.
Okay. My question also, not a question, but a statement, was this has happened, you know, about 10 years ago in the city of Axie, with the same individual, and I want to go probably and check the history of what happened there, but, so.
Any other questions in regard to this motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side? Motion carries. Okay, new business. Presentation of business 371 reconstruction.
That's what you get.
270.
Hello? I am Jim Holgren, with the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and I would like to get in front of the council to let you know that MINDOT is going to be starting a, the public involvement piece for some improvements on South 6th Street or Business Highway 371 here in Brainerd, and we, we need your help, we need public input into this process to help us determine what needs to be done with that highway, with that portion of highway, and I've prepared just a real brief picture of what, some of the items that we're going to be looking at, and also my business card.
The mic was set for Tim, you might have.
Oh, okay. Don't worry about that. Can you hear me now? What I'd like to touch base with you on is that MINDOT has identified needed improvements on the highway in town here, and this would be an opportunity, what we're, what we're looking at doing is reconstructing the pavement based on our pavement needs, our ride, things of that nature. The original construction of the highway was, dates back to the late 20s, I think there is some improvements, then again, in approximately the mid 50s, and then, since then, we've been doing mill and overlay type projects about every eight years. It's not the most cost-effective way of getting our needs met. There's going to be a opportunity for the city to address some of the underground infrastructure needs, the sewer, the water, things of that nature. One of the issues that MINDOT is going to be getting into is our corridor is built out from edge of sidewalk to edge of sidewalk, or basically building face to building face. We're going to be challenged with fitting our needs, our, to meet ADA requirements in, as well as maintaining, you know, the typical section. Currently, it's a five lane typical section, two lanes southbound, two lanes northbound, and a center left turn lane. To fit everything in, plus address the ADA needs that are out there, we're either going to need to do one of two things. Either we're going to need to buy additional right-of-way and build out of the existing corridor to fit everything in that we need to fit, or take the opposite approach and build inward. Reduce the lanes of traffic to one lane northbound, one lane southbound, and carry the continuous left turn lane through town. This could be a big change, but it would fit what we need to accomplish in, under this project. So, I wanted to get in front of the city council, let you know of, you know, the potential project that we're going to be looking at, also start the public involvement piece, get, probably start a public open house, get in front of the committee, start soliciting the feedback that we need to help us make this decision. I put together a rough schedule, just kind of spitballing of what we need to accomplish, when we need to accomplish it by. The project that we're looking at is going to be in the summer of 2017, we're looking at a letting of fall of 2016, so we're going to be needing to get the ball rolling, so we can make timely decisions, so our designers have enough time to design it, our right-of-way staff has enough time to get out and acquire the right-of-way that we need for the project. This will be a, we will need municipal consent from the city council as part of the project, so I put together a rough agenda, or, excuse me, a rough schedule to kind of keep me on task as to how we need to proceed with the project. I think that is about all I had, I don't want to take up a lot of your time with this, I just wanted to get in front of you, let you know that MINDOT's going to start working on the project, you might want to be aware of that, so that if you receive any phone calls, you can direct them back to me, I'll be happy to meet with anybody and discuss it at any time, so.
Just that one question.
Absolutely.
And that would be, what is the traffic count currently?
Uh, the traffic count is roughly about 11,000 to 12,000 vehicles per day.
And has that been increasing now? I know there was a big decrease once 371 went, but then I heard there's been an increase of traffic slowly, again rebuilding on it.
It's been fairly steady, it's, I can't really speak to the trend after 2008, it seemed like after 2008, everything kind of flatlined, gas prices went up, you know, the, the great recession happened.
Okay.
So, things seem to really slow down, in that, you know, carried through with most of the, most of the roadways that we have seen. So, taking everything into account, we've been pretty stable on this section of roadway.
What are the ADA requirements that you spoke of that might impact what you can do here?
Um, there are a long list of items that we have to be mindful of. The cross slope of the sidewalk can't be greater than 2%. There can't be the ramps, the slopes of the ramps can't exceed 8% for a certain distance. There's width, we would be required to carry a width of six feet minimum, I think there's some things that we can do where we can bring it into a little bit tighter. The biggest challenge that we run into is that cross slope can't exceed 2% at every driveway that we encounter, the driveways are probably 5, 6, 8%. So, to put a 2% slope across to, for the ADA sidewalk, will create either a bump, or makes it difficult for people to enter their driveway. So, those are some of the challenges that we're going to be faced with, there's things that we can do to lessen that, we can play with the curb height, the centerline profile, things of that nature.
And would the right-of-way that you might be, at some point, consider acquiring, is it privately owned, or is it city right-of-way?
I think for the most part, it will be privately owned, there may be some city parcels that we will encounter through there, we haven't started the process yet, so I don't know who owns what through there.
Thank you.
I just have one more question on roundabouts, is there any roundabouts proposed?
Not at this time, but we will be mindful of that as we proceed, and we will be willing to take any input that anybody may have to that regard.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
One real quick question, I'm looking at the proposed narrowed five lane and the three lane.
Yes.
Maybe I'm just not understanding what the difference is here, but the sidewalks are going from 6.8 to 13.8? Why?
Why? That would give us enough room to meet the ADA requirements, it wouldn't all have to be that 16 or 13.8 feet of sidewalk, it could be 6, 7, 8 foot boulevard, and then the sidewalk. So, it could be an opportunity to create green space in a boulevard type scenario. Obviously, in the downtown area, you probably wouldn't want that, but maybe there's an opportunity to introduce something architectural, treatment, stamped concrete, something of that nature, just throwing an idea out there, you know, we have, we have a lot more discussion on what the city would like to see as part of this project.
Thank you.
I just, real quick question, the proposed three lane, we're looking at the four feet on each side of the lane, is that just a shoulder, could we make that a bike lane? Can, I mean, right now, 6th Street is really dangerous to ride on, in my opinion, because it's two lanes and no shoulder.
Yes, there would be an opportunity under that typical section to introduce a feature of that nature, we're open to that discussion, so those are the types of feedback that we're looking for.
What's your budget?
What's our budget? Our budget has been set at $7.5 million to accomplish this section of roadway, that would be from the signal at the intersection of Washington Street or Trunk Highway 210, down to roughly about Joseph Street, which is about 1.13 miles. So, that's the budget that we've established for that, but we need to figure out what the typical section is before we can start putting, you know, cost to what that needs to be.
Less than the college drive, pretty, pretty economic.
True, that does not include, you know, is there any city utilities that need to be addressed, so those would be in addition to that cost, this is just what we're anticipating for the MINDOT cost, so there's other things that come into play, you know, that will drive up the cost of the project, obviously.
I assume that you'll be coming back, either to us or through written notification of when and where the public hearing will be?
Absolutely, absolutely, and it's a, going to be a kind of a stepped-in process, and, you know, we'll, we'll, MINDOT will take the lead, I'll be the point of contact for MINDOT, and we'll be working with city staff as we, as we proceed with it, so we will definitely need to be coordinating this project. Also, I wanted to take the opportunity to let the city council know that MINDOT has approved the TAP grant that the city had applied for, for connecting the. approved the TAP grant that the city had applied for, for connecting the trail at Buffalo Hills, at the signal at Buffalo Hills, down to where roughly where this project would stop. So, you know, we would take that opportunity to fill in the gap for pedestrians and bicyclists as well. So, there's another opportunity for us to coordinate our projects, so.
Any other questions?
Mark has one.
Jim, you stole my thunder.
I am. I'm not going to do that.
That's all right. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. If I may, Mr. President, I'd like to make a couple comments. First of all, with response to Councilman Pridgett's issue of bike lanes, the planning department will be watching the project very closely to make sure that multimodal transportation is addressed in this project from, in their section of the project, to make sure that bicyclists, pedestrians, transit are all looked at in the design. And I'm hoping that this project, that there will be some thought given to landscaping plans for this. I don't see it as being a College Drive landscaping project, but I hope it's not all concrete and asphalt, so that this is a major corridor through our community. So, here's an opportunity for us to do some enhancement to it, to make it look better. Third, the MINDOT project is set to stop at Joseph Street. As you recall, earlier this year, we got authorization from the City Council to submit, as Jim had mentioned, a Transportation Alternatives Program grant. Here was an opportunity for, to continue, being that their project was stopping to continue pedestrian or multimodal opportunities south all the way to Industrial Park Road, but we needed money to do that. So, what we did is we applied for a grant for a total of $438,000 in round number to continue the project for non-motorized transportation south to Industrial Park Boulevard. We were successful in that grant. So, as Jim mentioned, they'll be, we'll be taking off and finishing, doing the project south of Joseph Drive to include a wide sidewalk on the east side of the road from Joseph all the way to Industrial Park Road. That was the grant request that had a 20% match that we came to you for, and you authorized that, or 20 or 25%. So, we're real happy that finally, we're going to have a South Street, Sixth Street corridor that will be pedestrian-friendly.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you, and.
Thank you. We'll be talking soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's getting late, and I know the planning commission wants to, but I also know that there's some students here that need to have some things signed. So, if you need your student request signed, please come forward, and then we'll move forward with the planning commission right after that.
Anybody can.
Jess, do you want any to sign too? Good. You did. You did. This is. This is the way we do it in pictures. Now you see what kind of contract that's for. Yeah. It's on my checks, too. Thank you for coming. You guys can stay as long as you want to. Mark, are you ready for me to hand over to you? Okay.
Now I got to adjust it down to Mark's side. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Before you tonight are some recommendations from the planning commission on some zoning ordinance text amendment changes. The planning commission has been working on this for, oh, a year or so. They've been looking at the issue of permitting houses that are smaller than the minimum dwelling size that we have in the community today, which is 750 square feet or 1,000 square feet, depending on which section of the zoning ordinance you look at, and we're going to be talking about that later. It's also been looking at amendments to the zoning ordinance to require infill design standards for small houses and for all infilled dwellings in the community, and also to correct some inconsistencies that exist in the zoning ordinance, dealing with dwelling size, regardless if you decide to make changes to the infill or small houses or not, and I'll go into that in a minute as well. So, before you tonight is an ordinance that is the technical side of making the amendments to the zoning ordinance, and I'd like to just very briefly run through them with you so that we're all on the same page of what is being proposed. First of all, because we're talking about this term infill, there is no definition in the zoning ordinance for infill as it currently stands, so the planning commission is recommending a definition of infill be added to the zoning ordinance. Section, and these are the section-by-section changes that would incorporate the design standards of small houses and the square footage changes. What these changes do is amend the building design standards for single-family dwellings to, this first one specifies a minimum dwelling area of 750 square feet as permitted by right. That is to correct the inconsistency that exists in two sections of the zoning ordinance. One is 750, and the other one says 1,000. The suggestion is, if nothing else changes, at least correct that inconsistency. Item A2 then gets into the issue that is creating a lot of conversation, that single-family dwellings that would be greater than 400 square feet and less than 750 square feet shall meet the following minimum design standards or criteria. A, B, and C are listed. And that's in R1 districts, and R2 districts, and then it goes on to identify the criteria for the two-family and townhome standards as well. Then we, they talked about the issue of garages, and as you can see here, they have identified some parameters for garages associated with dwellings less than 750 and greater than 400 for 6C. I'd like to point out here that if the council does conduct the first reading on this, that we do need to make an amendment because these garage standards also apply to R1, single-family dwellings, as well as two families, so we need to, I need, we need to add that language for our single-family dwellings, garages as well. The next page, we get into the discussion about design standards. Residential infill development in new dwellings less than 750 square feet in area and dwellings less than 22 feet wide shall adhere to the following design requirements. Then it goes on to list if a dwelling is going to be that small, that they have to meet these design standards. It also specifies that a dwelling of this size is not a permitted by right use, it's a use that is permitted by conditional use permit. So, if there's a vacant lot in some part of the community, and someone proposes to put a house that's 400 square foot, square feet on it, and it's allowed use, it needs to come before the planning commission and the city council to receive approval by conditional use permit to ensure that the design standards are met, as well as the correct items that are identified in the conditional use permit process to ensure compatibility with the neighborhood, and items like that. As a very critical, critical part of the planning commission's recommendation is the conditional use permit process to approve a dwelling less than 750 square feet and more than 400. And then, the design criteria also apply to infill development for any lot in the community, although that does not, if a typical-sized dwelling is being proposed, 1,080, 1,200 square foot dwelling is proposed on a vacant lot, and it's infill, the design standards do apply to that dwelling, except that dwelling does not need to come before the city council, planning commission, and city council for approval. They just need to identify how they're complying with the design standards. Again, there are three critical elements of this. In your discussion tonight, it depends on what direction you decide to go. We have reconciling this inconsistency in dwelling, minimum dwelling size, either 750 or 1,000. The planning commission is recommending 750. You've got the issue of allowing small houses, if you will, dwellings less than 750 square feet and more than 400. Then you've got the design standards that are, can be independent of the small houses, so that needs to be part of your discussion. So, just want to point that out so that if you decide not to have first reading, there might be some part of this that you might want to have first reading about, but you're not comfortable with the others, so. That is a quick overview. If there's any questions about the planning commission's recommendation, I'll be happy to try and answer them. This recommendation comes from the planning commission on a five-to-two vote. One thing I would like to point out is, early in the process, and I think I mentioned it in email today, we sent letters to something like 44 contractors and real estate companies to solicit input on what they thought of these issues. Councilmember Matten and Councilmember Sheeler have been watching this and have, and I know Councilmember Matten, with his real estate hat on, has commented on it. Councilman Sheeler has been watching this carefully and has addressed the planning commission, raised his concerns at the planning commission. Outside of these two members, the only written comment we got was today from a real estate agent, and I'll quote him as stating the idea is stupid, and we should not be enacting something like this in our city. So, with that public input in mind, if there's any other questions about the process or input, we have.
I have two questions on what we have before us, and one is in Section 4, Number D, and then almost identical wording in Section 7B, and what I'm concerned about, it says dwellings greater than 400 feet and less than 750 are permitted to be less than 22 feet wide, and that's again repeated in Section B of, item B of Section 7. But it doesn't say how much less, and it would seem to me that would be an important consideration.
We talked about a minimum dwelling width at the planning commission, just as an idea if it wanted to recommend a minimum width. It thought that a minimum width was not needed. Practical side of the design would take care of that. I will tell you that the one house, I guess, that people might think of as being a small house in our community that's been, that's a recent construction, is the one on 13th Street, just north of Oak Street. It was approved, had to be approved by variance.
Is that the windowless?
No, I don't think so. It's a very, it's very close to the street, though, and that dwelling is 16 feet wide. It's, it's, the square footage is greater than 700, but it's the width that's 16 feet. And, you know, I think if you stop and think about the makeup of our community for a moment, particularly in the northeast and southeast, there are a substantial, I don't know what adjective to put on it, a number of dwellings that do not meet the 700 square foot minimum standard. They are there today. The other thing I'd like to mention with regard to the infill, the planning department's position on the infill development is one that we have not, we have not opposed it, but we have not been necessarily in support of it. The planning department does have some concerns, but also, the planning department does understand where the planning commission is coming from, and they've made some very good points on the merits to small dwellings in our community. So, I just wanted to point that out. The planning commission is a little more supportive of the design standards, if you want that information. So, with that said, Mr. President, I will stop talking, and we do have two members of the planning commission that are here tonight.
Couple things I would like to add. You're going to have council discussion?
Yes. Well, we got two members of the planning commission who would like to present to the council, too.
Oh, okay, okay. You want them, let's let them present, and then we can ask all the questions.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Hayden on the planning commission, and there, Mark just thought it would be a good idea if we came up to kind of explain a little bit of where the planning commission was coming from, why we've brought this, why this, why we've taken on this issue, and the reasons that we feel it's important. Two main reasons that we, as a planning commission, have been looking at it, building that, have been looking at conditional use permits for allowing a vehicle for buildings smaller than the city code currently allows. The first, and one of the primary reasons, is to promote infill development in the city, to make it easier and more desirable to build on the many vacant lots that we have in the city. When we first started discussing this topic, we gave Mark the task of giving us a report on the vacant lots in the city and how many they, how many we have, and it was very interesting. Can we look at that slide? This is the map that he came up with to show us that there is 465 vacant lots in our city, and those lots are primarily lots that have had houses that were demolished or burned down at some point in our long history, and have not been, and now continue to sit vacant, doing nothing for the city. And many of them are funny-sized and can't be built upon, meeting our current city codes, or if they did build upon them and meet current city codes, it would leave an undesirably small yard. So, that leaves these, it just leaves, leaves them to most likely continue in the setting that they're currently in, which is just continuing having vacant lots. We believe that building some flexibility into our city's code, making it easier for small-sized homes to be built in these vacant lots, we just believe that promotes the public good of our city. It would also, also create the opportunity for substantial additional tax revenue if these lots would contain houses, and I have an example of that. My husband owns a lot that is a perfect case study of that. It's a house that he, he had as a rental house that burnt down in 1997. It's on the corner of North 10th and Ivy, if anybody's interested. It's a long and skinny lot, and it's non-conforming, and after that fire, he tried to donate that lot to the Habitat, Habitat for Humanity to build on, but at that time, the city wouldn't let them build because it was non-conforming, they couldn't fit it in there. So, as a result, we've had a vacant lot there for the last 17 years instead of a home. And additionally, because that lot is unbuildable in current code, and therefore basically worthless, he pays $7 a year in taxes on that lot. Any home there would, would require at least $500 a year of taxes. So, as a result, that one lot sitting vacant so far has been a lost opportunity of about $8,500 in taxes. And then you multiply that by however many infill lots might be able to be built upon as a result of this change, and with having 465 vacant lots in our city, that's a pretty good opportunity. In addition to the practical purpose of making infill development in our lots easier, there's another reason, and that's meeting the demands of a different kind of homeowner. Many small families, single people, retirees, want a different kind of home than is standard of being built out there right now. They may want a home that's. They may want a home that's one of many of the following, either lower cost than a large new home, environmentally friendly home because it is smaller and uses a smaller amount of resources, low maintenance because it is new, but it's still something they can afford. They want something low maintenance but affordable. But if those people don't want to live in an apartment, then they're not left with a lot of options. But small homes can be a perfect fit for a lot of these people. And then I wanted to address just a few concerns in advance that have, have come up through our discussion. Just wanted to make it clear that these homes, they would still have to adhere to conform to all of the other existing building code requirements other than the size. They still have to meet the plumbing, electrical, et cetera, et cetera, all other building codes. That's part of the challenge of building these, is to meet all those codes in that smaller space. Also, it does not, this, this does not allow subdividing or any kind of change to adding a new dwellings, you know, putting a new dwelling in your backyard. This does not allow, allow for that. And possibly most importantly, the conditional use permit designation, instead of just allowing it by right, allows the council and the planning commission, the future council and planning commission, to deny any plans that would go against neighborhood character or devaluing neighbor, neighboring properties. That's a very important part of the whole, whole picture, is we want to have it as that conditional use so the future people presiding over that would have that ability to do that. And I wanted to show a few slides of some homes that are just examples of homes, new homes, that are in that small home realm that I think would fit nicely in Brainerd character, and just a few ones that I found online. This is an example of what the interiors, in case you're kind of curious how you would make a nice new home in that smaller space. Typically, what they are is a very open floor plan, and there's one, one space that serves the function of kitchen, living, dining room, in one kind of open floor plan area with separate areas only for bedroom and bathroom. So this is an example of, of some very cute designs for how some of these interiors can have. So I wanted, I hope this gives you a little bit better of an idea of where we're coming from on this. And, you know, just keep in mind that this is, if we allow a vehicle for small homes to be built in the city, that doesn't mean we're promoting that. We are just trying to be more accommodating to a wider variety of people in our community. And that small homes, they're not, they're not for everyone. Everybody's not going to be moving into them, but for some people, they are a perfect fit, and we want to be able to allow for that.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. My name is Rick Cole. I'm Seventeen Forty-Eight South Sixth Street, Brainerd, and a member of the planning commission, planning and zoning. Been on planning and zoning, I think, since two thousand and seven. And so I've been involved with the comprehensive plan and the new zoning ordinances that we currently have on the books. But other than those two examples, I would say most of my time on planning and zoning has been spent more on the zoning side than the planning side, meaning that I focus a lot, we, most of the activities that we engage in, in planning and zoning, are conditional use permits, variances, giving a ruling or an interpretation of the current zoning ordinance. And this, I'm excited about this opportunity because it does represent something for planning. And recently, I was on the internet searching out for articles and information about this issue that the city council has before them about small houses and infill. And I came across some information that I wanted to share with you. You could distribute that. What was, what I found interesting was that there, you could do a Google search on small houses or tiny houses, and that's the information that we have there. Actually, today I was online, and I saw that small house, just as a search term, two-point-one billion searches on it. And the numbers continued to increase. Now, we've been working on this for about a year, and I've been watching the trends on it, and it continues to, to rise and go up. What I found particularly interesting about it, when we, we add zoning to small houses, small houses zoning, or small houses, or tiny houses zoning, what we're finding is there's about a hundred and forty-five thousand to two-point-two million searches on that, compared to the eight-hundred-and-ninety million searches that you see for small houses. I thought that was interesting. If you turn to page two and three, what you'll find, when you go to those search pages, are how to get around zoning laws. That's most of the predominant first page that you see when you, when you Google this. And I thought that's, that's kind of interesting. And so I got a link that was sent by, by Dolly, and I looked on, clicked on the link to review it, and it came up Small House Society. And there's a video that the Small House Society in Iowa City put together, and that was pretty interesting. They showed a little map with a, with a pin in, marking Iowa City, and then they showed the east coast and the west coast, and how all of the other pins are over there. What that means is that the trends have already started on the east coast and the west coast, and it's only a matter of time before it hits here. Did anybody read the Star Tribune yesterday? Did you see the Twin Cities and Region below the fold? A little article called Debate on Granny Flats Turns Intense. Here's a, here's a community in St. Anthony Falls, near St. Paul, and they're having a debate about these mother-in-law flats. And it's kind of, kind of connects to what we're talking about here today, in that because they haven't got a zoning ordinance in place, they're having sixty, seventy people show up at their city council meetings because there's a huge debate going on about this issue. Now, in other suburbs in the cities, they've already passed these, these ordinances about the granny flats, and they haven't had any issues. And so I kind of think that there's a lesson to be learned here, is that the need for language about the small houses and infill may not be an issue that we have today, but it's kind of like the old story about Wayne Gretzky, and they asked him why he was such a prolific hockey scorer. And he says, "I don't skate to where the puck is, I skate to where the puck is going." And what that means is that we are, as planning and zoning, that's our job, is to be planning for the future, so that when the day comes that somebody wants to build a house that's under seven hundred and fifty square foot, they have to come to us with a conditional use permit, and we have some say over what happens in our community. Just to give you an example, what would happen if somebody came in and decided to buy the Whittier School property and build a bunch of small houses on it? Right now, we would have nothing to say about it. We'd have to be scrambling for that eventuality. If we have some, some zoning ordinance about small houses, now we have a little bit more control. That's what it's all about. Have there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I have some comments. I think it's about time we have some discussion here. I've been in all the planning and zoning, but, you know, I've seen enough cheerleading. But I'd just like to go on. I don't like this at all. And the planning commission, I was there at all the meetings, and I told them their job is to maintain or add value to the city, and that's exactly what's, the opposite of what's going on here. And I have, you know, asked Mark Ostagar to give me, out of eight-hundred-and-fifty cities in the state of Minnesota, you know, who is doing this so I could have a reference? And this is his reply on March ninth by email, and I'll give you a copy. Gary, I did not check other cities to get minimum house sizes because I have, I am sure that no other city allows them as small as we have them proposed. The normal minimum is not less than seven hundred square feet. Now, why are we the first one in this, in the state of Minnesota to be, you know, trying this is beyond me. I feel it's going to lower the surrounding area's boundary. And the picture that they were showing up there, it's kind of like if you take a wall eye and you stick it out real far in front of the camera, it makes it look a lot bigger. But, you know, when you're looking at three hundred square feet or three hundred and fifty, and I see that they went up to four hundred, which is great. But I talked to a lot of realtors, now one realtor supports us, and I went to, you know, and I can name them right down the line. So that's my comments as of now. Anybody else standing?
One of the things that has been brought up a couple of times as an important factor is that of the design parameters. And I'm just curious, who would be the, who would be the design review? Who does that currently? How does that work?
Right. There's, there'll be two types of design. There'll be design for a house that would be between four hundred and, and square feet and seven hundred and fifty square feet. That design review process would be part of the conditional use permit. Okay? If a house is being proposed that's infill, that is eight hundred square feet, or a thousand square feet, or twelve hundred square feet, whatever it is, that design review would be done by staff to ensure their compliance. If there's, if there's a disagreement between the respective builder and what staff is thinking is if it's meeting or not meeting the requirement, then it comes to the planning commission for interpretation of whether or not that design he, that's being proposed meets the standards, just like any other interpretation.
So for all of these, would the setbacks be the same? The lot setbacks, what, are they ten feet?
Typically, in R1, we can get down to as little as five feet on a side yard setback.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope we go forward with the first hearing, or the first reading. Traditionally, then, the second reading, and I presume some kind of a public hearing, would be held at our next meeting, and I would like to hear from the public on this. So I hope we at least proceed with a first reading, which we generally do, even if some of our members feel it's a terrible idea, but we usually do proceed with that. I have a question and then a couple of comments. Is this proposal only on infill lots?
Yes.
Not on other lots?
Correct.
Okay. I wanted to be clear, I thought that. I, I simply will say this, if there's a public hearing, if we go for the first reading and then next time, a second reading and a public hearing, I would certainly be very conscious of what the public says, because I think that's a big part of our job, is to listen, really hear what's said. So I would, I would want to do that. But I think tonight, we're kind of stating our biases a little bit. And I won't say I think this is a little bit like the mobile food service trucks. I think that it's coming. I think it's coming. And it's going to be tough, I think, for some people to accommodate that change. But there are some pluses. I think what's being proposed by the planning commission will protect some of the interests, such as councilmember Scheeler identified, where he's concerned with loss of value. Well, they couldn't just be put willy-nilly anywhere at this point, so I would see there being some protection there, Gary, for what you're concerned about. But I see this, and I believe councilmember, or planning commission member Hayden spoke to this, and Mr. Cole also to some extent, it will encourage more homeownership. I think there are many people today, and our area is a prime example, where people, many people, do not have a lot of money. So what do they do? They rent. Now, we hear the same people who maybe don't like this, think we have too many renters. Well, maybe if we could afford a small home, could build a small home, it'd be more affordable to more people. You might find more people becoming homeowners. You might. I mean, you've got to consider that. I think it would be ideal for very, people just starting out with no children, no family. It'd be ideal. And people who maybe think, well, we're young, we're just starting out, we may be moved, our company may move us, we may only be here a short time, but we'd like some equity. There's an opportunity for that. I think it's great for older people. Frankly, I've never wanted a big house. If I had one half my size, the size, I'd probably love it. So, so I think it would be a great opportunity for younger and older people alike. I think the energy efficiency is huge. This winter was brutal. We all spent a lot of money this year on heating our houses and our electricity, and for many of us, that wasn't fun. I mean, we had to do it, but it would be great if you had a little less of that, that you had to put out. With it being a little more efficient, perhaps across the board, people, this is a bigger picture, people would have more money to spend on other things in the community. You've got to spend all your money on your mortgage and your house, there isn't much less for anything else. So there might be a possibility of that. Now, these are all possibilities. I have heard from a couple of people who are bitterly opposed, and I've listened to them, and I've posed questions back to them, but they are, they are convinced that the, the loss to the city is far greater than the benefit. We need to hear them. I want to go ahead with a hearing. I want to hear them. And here, they may have good arguments, but I think, sure, sure, but I, I'm just stating what, some of the thoughts that I have, and I've really looked at this and considered it. I truly have, so that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas, yes? Thanks, thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I, I can only echo what Mrs. Cope just said. I don't have the experience of some people who are in real estate or other things, but I, I mean, the initial reaction, and I'm, and I'm kind of paraphrasing what Commissioner Hayden said, golly, right now you've got a dirt lot. How could anything we put on it devalue it? When we can't allow us to build on it now? So this seems like, in that respect, it's at least worth looking at the option, and I'd like to hear what people say, because it seems, I also have a house like this, Mrs. Cope's, and I, I'm kind of looking forward to the day when I, I can, I can convince my family that it's time to downsize. Now, a question I have, i- i- there's a number of references in this, too, and Alderman Borkning brought this up as to the, the design police, but it refers to performance standards as specified in section fifty-four-nine and fifty-six-eleven, but it doesn't tell you where you can find those. And I, I'd like to read what those are. And I think it should refer to where those design standards are, because I don't know where they're at. I see all our ordinances are three-digit, two-digit, two-digits, so it must not be an ordinance, it must be a state building code, is all I can think of, but I don't know that, because it doesn't say that. Yeah, it refers to it three or four times. So I'd like to, does any, can anybody answer where that, where those are, and, and why it's not specific in the ordinance as to where, where, where you get those?
Well, all the text amendments are, text amendments are in the zoning ordinance, so perhaps there's a typo on that that you caught that we need to-
Okay. So that's, that's referring to something that is in our-
Zoning ordinance. All these changes are zoning ordinance changes, zoning text amendments.
Okay. Well, I'm just referring to, maybe specific, Mr. Ostagar, not, B eight, C. So it's on the first page, it's B, and then, and then, and then eight, and then it flips over to C on the second page, it refers to performance standards. They're also actually in A to C. The same two references are there, and there, there are a few other times.
The five-one-five should have been before the fifty-four.
They're just, five-one-fives are missing. Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure, because I'd like to look, so that things you already have, we're not introducing new, new performance standards, or-
We have some already.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I'm-
Either of you two want to say anything?
Um, you know, being on the planning commission, I have to say that my, my initial reaction to the idea was lukewarm at best. I thought it was a solution, looking for a problem. We did discuss this quite a bit. I would have to say, having- I would have to say, having been in all the discussions, that, that what we heard is, is, you know, I'd have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Schiller's assertion that it was cheerleading. I mean, both Mr. Cole and Ms. Hayden had brought up negatives while we talked about this. And again, I, kind of just echoing some of what's being said, I mean, a lot with nothing in it, I mean, a lot with something in it has to be better. And then to kind of lay some of these spheres, I mean, it, it definitely talks about single detached dwellings located on lots less than the minimum lot area. So you can't put a small house anywhere. It has to be a lot that's non-conforming or smaller already. So, you know, I'm still open to ideas, I can't say I'm a hundred percent, you know, I, I'm, as, as it stands right now, I'm in favor of this, but, you know, that's all I have to say.
Just for clarification, that is not the case, they are not on non-conforming lots, correct?
In, any inf, in, any infill, um, the design standards apply to all lots, be it a ten thousand square foot lot, or a, uh, three thousand square foot lot.
I just have to read this, because me and Mary are.
Just a second, let Mark finish.
The standards for the small homes, and I may have misspoke earlier, uh, Councilwoman Matten, applies to non-conforming lots, as, uh, Councilmember Pritchett has, has reminded me. I may have misspoke earlier.
That's where I always, you know, I keep getting thrown, because when I had asked you on planning and zoning, you said, no, they could be on a five acre, well, a one acre tract, and it could be a four hundred square foot home with conditional use permit, and that just seems strange to me. So that was what we had clarified. Um, and I know that I had expressed some concern way back when, um, and I've always said, I'm, I'm open to hearing pros and cons to it. As a real estate agent, and, and having the experience with the amount of people that I've get to take out and hear the feedback, small has never been the thing that people actually go search out. So I am very, very torn at that. Um, and my concerns with Brainerd being an extremely high rate of rentals, um, I even looked, quickly looked at the picture that was shown there, and I saw a stair or a ladder going up to the loft. Uh, my concern is, you know, that's a lot of times how you're maneuvering a one-bedroom i- is a loft with this, with a ladder going to it. You know, if they're turned into rentals, what are the stipulations then? What are the modifications then? You know, so I, I'm very, very, very torn, and, uh, and the only reason it got changed from three hundred and fifty square feet to four hundred was because it was found out that mortgages, or lenders, won't even lend on anything less than four hundred square feet. So even they're seeing, there's, there's a, there's not a need as much as, as the smaller, uh, homes or the smaller designs, um, where they're not finding the value. And that was in the email I had sent. There were a lot of positives, and here were the negatives, and a lot of it came from the zoning regulations, the, uh, the mortgage industry, um, and so I, I guess I'm still very torn at anything less than seven hundred and fifty square feet as, um, just having our, our, our standard. So I, I guess with that being said, and I know I had sent an email back in October, and I only assumed that, uh, Mark had shared that, uh, with what, what most of my concerns were at that point, but I'm open to hearing, you know, as far as what other people have to say in the community.
And I really want to clarify this. You used the word infill, and we're using it because I think, and, and I'm going to go back to the cheerleading. The reason I said cheerleading, because James Norwood was an opposing factor, and he wasn't invited here. Um, just the ones that were invited here were four, that's what I meant by that. But go back to infill. The definition of infill in this thing is any vacant lot or parcel which meets the following: served by public sewers, that's all of Brainerd, runs an existing public street, that's all of Brainerd, bounded on one or more sides by lots one acre in size or smaller, that's all of Brainerd, with residential structures and, so infill, your definition of hidden in here, is a hundred percent every city lot in Brainerd, which includes Crestfield, Northtown, Brainerd Oaks, Andrew Edition, so you can go right out there and, according to this definition of infill.
The planning commission didn't see it that way.
Well, I see it that way.
So I just reported to you that the planning commission didn't, doesn't, didn't see it that way, that it was all lots, just so that you know. And I can do some research on that to verify that.
Maybe there's a way to make that more precise.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Let me just make a couple of comments. I, I noticed that there was, uh, voted five to two, and usually, and I do appreciate the time and effort that the planning and zoning put in, because they put in many, many hours, and don't always get their gratitude for, and appreciation for doing that. But one of the things I look at, and I've had a number of calls, and talk to people on this, and, and to me, uh, I think, I made a, a point about, um, you know, realtors are, are being able to sell, um, and it'd be interesting to see what the realtors in this area feel, or how, what their reaction, or, or their experience has been with that. Mentioned about a banker not being able to, um, finance anything less than four hundred square feet, and I look at, we put an addition on our house, it was twenty by twenty-four, and I look at that, is, if that was just what I lived in for a house, holy smoke, that goes stir crazy. But anyway, um, I'm willing to, uh, listen, uh, my, my gut reaction is that, um, it, it's not something that I, I foresee being the best for the city of Brainerd, and I guess, uh, time will tell, and there's people on this council that will be voting either a or nay, once it comes up for a reading, but I think having a public hearing, and a, an excellent public hearing with input from every aspect that we can, which would include realtors, bankers, as well as maybe other developers, so.
I'm hoping ordinary citizens, because they're really the ones who are affected.
Thank you. With all due respect to Commissioner's, uh, Councilmember Schiller's discussion with realtors and, um, whoever you had a chance to talk with, what really irks me is the planning commission, the place where that testimony should be heard, the planning commission did everything possible to try to get comments from that sector, forty-four different letters were sent trying to get comment. I think we even followed up with a reminder letter. No one came for, one person outside of, of, uh, Councilmember Matten and, uh, Councilmember Schiller came forward, and that was today.
So maybe after this meeting, we'll maybe hear from them.
Then it tells me that it was not important enough for them to go to the, the planning commission.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, let's all just take a deep breath here, because those things happen. But let's just proceed and have a, a good pub, uh, as much publicity, I'll bet you, the dispatch will give us a good article and get people concerned to come up here, and let's go from there. I think a lot of goodwill on all sides, but let's see what we can do.
And I would just like, one second, you know, that's why I voted for you, is probably the comment I get the most when I talk about this, and you ask them to come to these public hearings, and they're not, but they, and a lot of them say it'll affect their business, you know, to stand up here and go one way or the other, and everybody's struggling in the business world, so a lot of them won't show up, but then the last words is, that's why I voted for you, and you make the decision, and they'll tell me, and, so I hope everybody gets the calls that I got.
I don't think there's any more discussion. I just want to give my two cents, and, and I also am kind of mixed at this whole thing. I like the idea of having a public hearing, uh, and I agree also with, uh, the planner that, that's probably where the public hearing should have been, and usually we have it in both places. Maybe because people will see something in the paper, they'll at least help us decide which way we should go. Um, it is a tough question. I know it has been around the city for a couple of years, um, just the plain discussion. Now we're getting down to the nitty-gritty as to what it would do and what we can, can't do, and I, I really think that, um, we should vote to, um, pass this tonight, so that we can have a public hearing at either our next meeting or, uh, second meeting in, in May. So moved.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
Can I just ask one quick question, a yes or no? Um, the, the map that you showed of the vacant lots in, in town, um, what percentage of those would you guess are, um, what we're, what we're describing as infill?
Non-conforming or smaller lots?
Well, yep, there's infill lot, if it meets the definition of infill, or if it's a non-conforming lot, those are two different things. I'd have to go back and, and double check for you.
But it's not all of them.
I don't think so.
Okay. Pat just wants to make a clarification, um, to a public hearing. Just so we're clear, because we talked about this recently, about what a public hearing means for second reading ordinance, that's an agenda that says public hearing. There is no special notices that go in the newspaper, there's no special notices to businesses. So, I mean, the agenda's going to be the only place you see the word special, a public hearing.
And hopefully Jessica will put it in.
Okay. First and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign?
I'm going to say, and I knew that, I wanted it to pass, but I'm still going to oppose it.
Okay. So was that, are you a nay?
Yeah.
It passes five to two.
Can I ask for clarification? Are we doing all three of those in this, in this motion? All three of those concerns?
That was my understanding.
That were brought up, because I guess, I mean, and me personally, I would totally vote, yes, we need to change the language to seven hundred and fifty square feet, but I would just assume that there were three different motions that were going to be happening tonight. Correctly made, next to the language.
I, I think we just want, my understanding is, we just want to have a public hearing.
You heard on all of them.
Can we then siphon them off?
Yes.
Yeah, we can just.
When we do the final, the second reading, you can do, we'll have it so that there are three on the agenda, so it's three separate actions for next.
That's okay.
All right.
Any clarification? So we pass five to two.
And for the record, I am also a real estate agent, too. Um, you know, I've got my license, yes, I have, I have my license in two thousand and seven, so I have a background in real estate.
Okay. Let's see, where do we go? Public forum? Okay, public forum, anybody here to speak in public forum?
Thank you to the planning commission members. Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in public forum? Is there anybody here for public forum? Seeing none, public forum is closed, so it opened at, um, nine fifty-two and closed at nine fifty-three. Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, any additional reports?
Uh, just a short one. Uh, number one is, I think most people have noticed that, uh, we are having, um, two teams for, in memory of Bonnie Cumberland, uh, on May fifth at noon, bowling, and everybody's welcome to either attend and bowl, or bowl and not bowl, or whatever you want to do, but, and I don't know if everybody saw a picture that was taken last year, uh, if they haven't, I'll put it down at city, in, in the office down in City Hall. But, um, anyway, and the registrations are available, uh, and if for some reason you don't want to pay the fifty dollars, which is not mandatory, uh, I will cover up everything to cover up for that, uh, for one of the teams, so. With that, it was a beautiful day for an Easter, and what a beautiful day we had, I tell you what, I've never seen one that nice, and after a long winter, the good Lord really shined on us yesterday. With that end of reporting, thank you.
I think he's teasing us.
City attorney, anything? City administrator?
No report, sir.
Okay. City engineer, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just one item, we are anticipating the delivery of our new street sweeper on Thursday, so it should be delivered, and we're going to put it to great use. Great.
City planner?
Mr. President, thank you. I have a few items to report on. The, um, the next edition of the city newsletter is probably going in the mail, hopefully today, tomorrow, uh, be in, uh, mailboxes this week. One of the major articles in this, uh, edition of the newsletter is our story about why the city hall needs a new HVAC system, and I hope the pictures that we're using describe the problem we are having, had it through. Pine Street, um, is still not complete. I'm hoping that, uh, the city attorney feels that we have the authority to simply, uh, clean it up ourselves, or hire somebody to clean it up, um, in a, in a quick manner, now that his, um, appeal deadline has come and gone. Friday afternoon, there was a meeting of some downtown, um, property owners regarding the streetscape issue, um, and we will be reporting, have more information for you at that, at your next meeting about what their recommendations are. One of the recommendations, though, that they have is they want to rebid, um, and change the specs a little bit, so they're not as, uh, to maybe reduce the cost, and if I'm going to do that, I just want the council's authority to do that, to, to rebid it, and maybe have it back in time for the next meeting. Uh, we only got two bids last time, so I, I don't imagine if we're going to reduce the scope, that we're going to get more bids, uh, but we can, uh, send it to the two that submitted. The next meeting of the, uh, Mississippi Riverfront, uh, project is set for April thirtieth at the, um, at the police, or at the fire station. And finally, uh, Renew, the company that is interested in purchasing the Wassa site, um, after a lot of back and forth about what our in-submitting requirements are, and some, uh, discussion about what is, needs to be submitted and why, we feel that Renew has submitted a complete application, um, and that, uh, we'll be trying to schedule a, a public hearing on that. I've talked to the planning commission chair, she would prefer that that be a special meeting of the planning commission. Uh, the next regular meeting is May fourteenth, so it very likely could be, um, that week for a special meeting, or the week after. So, uh, it's good to see that Renew is still interested in the project, and that's all I have.
I have one question for Chad. Ted Ross has, um, got an April twenty-eighth court date for something, don't he? Um, there's a.
Yes, he does. It could be for another calendar.
Or not cleaning up, so he's got the pressure on him for cleaning it up by the twenty.
I would imagine, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure of the date, I think it's actually later this week.
Or later this week? Okay, okay. I know that we were wondering. Because you were wondering if we should take action for cleaning up, and I know that there's a court date to do some of that, so we don't need to take any action, was the clarity I was looking for?
I can follow up with Matt.
I think it's whether or not he need, should, he needs, he's going back to jail, I don't think he has to do, deal with cleanup.
Okay.
Chief, fire chief?
Police chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing in addition to the written report.
Could I just make a comment? Um, I'd just like to compliment the chief in the fire department, or police department for this, um, in, in your letter, or in your news thing about this, and I don't know if it's White or White, uh, Newby?
Wyatt, Newby.
Wyatt. Uh, I think that was an excellent, excellent, uh, thing that was done for that young youngster, and, uh, compliment you and your staff and everybody involved in that.
Thank you.
That was tremendous, so.
Finance director?
Uh, just, uh, one thing, this month, you received the budget to actual summary with this month's report. Um, there may be some, um, remaining two thousand and thirteen entries that need to be made, so there might be some changes to those numbers, and the auditors, um, we're busy getting ready for them to come, and they will start field work the first week in May. That's it?
Council president, no report.
That was cool.
Any other committee reports?
I'll just give a very, very brief update on the history week. I know Carl, our co-chair, uh, sends you a lot of material on it, and, uh, Carl really puts in everything but the kitchen sink, and so I just want to clarify that some, most of that will happen, but some may not. Uh, we do want to complete our agenda by this weekend, and when I say that, I mean that will be the major events. However, we have agreed that there would still be room for some fill-ins, so to speak, uh, things that may not be major, but you'll fill them in between times. Uh, the sixteenth of June, which is Monday, and the kickoff of, of the celebration will be City Hall Day. So that day is pretty well dedicated, uh, to, uh, City Hall and the, the rededication of City Hall as we celebrate our centennial. Uh, we have, I think, a truly, um, a truly good, outstanding even, ceremony planned for that, um, and I have to add this little caveat by saying, it's possible that we won't pull this off, but we do expect to, and have all of the church bells, plus the courthouse bells ring at eleven o'clock, which is when the actual opening ceremony will begin. And, uh, following that, we will have VFW Color Guard coming. We are anticipating a very special guest of honor. We are anticipating a very special guest of honor, who the mayor is aware of, but who we will be honoring at that, and a couple of rather brief speakers and so on. Then again, following the completion on Sunday of the interdenominational church service, which we anticipate beginning at 1 o'clock, following the completion, again, we want to have all the church bells plus the carillon bells in the courthouse ring again. So we think it'll be a fitting opening and closing. Thank you to Nikki Tobaka, who made the suggestion that the staff in City Hall and the council and the mayor, anyone who has children 14 years or younger, who would like to be involved in the placing of the time capsule, which may be more of a time box, but anyway, whatever it is we're going to use, we would like to have their names and have them be the people involved in that. We will probably call on the mayor to take pictures of that, and then have pictures included in the time box itself or the capsule. And also the families can have pictures. So 100 years from now, whenever it's taken out and looked at again, maybe the great, great-grandchildren of those children will be able to talk about that. So we hope that staff or council who have children in that age will let us know, because we think it'll be meaningful to them as well. So, but we're perking right along. It's a great committee, hardworking, way too many ideas for one week, but we, I think we're going to have a good week, and please note, please note, we are not asking for any city money, in spite of all we're doing. And our discussion...
Thank you. Anybody else have any reports? Four minutes.
Don't give...
Okay. We have one committee recommendation, recommended by Mayor Waleen, to the Cable TV Advisory Board, Robert Brady, turn to expire 12/31/2016.
Wolf Turp.
Thank you.